Good evening and welcome to the July eighteenth School Committee Meeting. It is seven PM. Just after seven PM, I'll remind everyone that we are being broadcast live as well as recorded for future pre-broadcast. We rise for the Pledge of Legions?
My Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just for all.
So, given it is middle of July, I'm assuming we don't have any student representatives?
They are probably at the pool right now having a barbecue.
For them, enjoy your summers, kids. We don't have anyone in the audience, so I'm assuming we don't have any public comment or communication. So, any old business anyone wants to raise tonight? Okay. New business not included here?
I do have a couple of things just real quickly, just to make the committee aware that there was some water damage downstairs at the earth of the high school. Overflow of a pipe during one of the rains, I think it was probably three or four days ago, you had really heavy rains. We didn't get anything amended, which I thought was interesting. But I believe that the pipe backed up overflowed and there was some damage to the blueboard and some materials, some supplies, paper and some pens and stuff like that. It's all been inventoried. They have cut out some of the blueboard in the concession room, which the boosters use, and also in the supply room. That'll be repaired. Kind of similar, but in a much smaller level than we had when the, we had the problem in the, in the main office. We had to tear the whole place apart, if you recall. That was, that was terrible. But Service Master has been in, they have demoed the three walls, and Courtney and Jeff will be working on that. And I believe Rebuild X is going to be doing the restoration work. We'll have more details for you coming up. So, there was some damage there. And the only other thing I was going to add was that I did have opportunity last week to go down to the Superintendent's Conference in, in Falmouth. Did have opportunity to meet with the Commissioner. Had a nice conversation with him at lunch one day. We did have a couple of really strong keynote speakers that were talking about change. And I would share with you that the running theme is that from ninety-three to two thousand and seventeen, there's been a lot of change in the form of accountability, assessments and so forth. This looks like there's going to be, the pendulum is starting to swing back now away from all of the accountability, all of the mandates, trying to ease some of that in encouraging the, the education process to go back to being creative, being collaborative, and still covering the standards, but not so focused on, on assessments and on some of the mandates that have been there. So, I'm hoping that over the next number of years, there'll be a little bit of a switch. The Commissioner is a strong proponent of it. He, he told the story of the district determined measures, which was a, which was going to be a real challenge to, to, to make happen in all of the schools. He was in the Executive Board and he was also overseeing the school district. And they were at a board meeting and the question was raised, how come this school district didn't turn in their DDMs? And it was interesting because he was sitting on the board. He said, "I didn't do them. I didn't see the value in doing them." And that was the, the change. And he was working directly with the Commissioner. And he basically was trying to make, make the point that you gave, you gave too much. You gave them way too many mandates, way too many things to take care of, way too many accountabilities, way too many documents that need to be submitted in, in the evaluation process. And so, this, this gentleman, Jeff Riley, is, is kind of swinging back the other way, which I'm hoping is going to be a good thing. Not that accountability is a bad thing, not that, that preparing and having our students be strong and be capable on, on the state assessments, that's all, that's all well and good, but it shouldn't drive what we're doing. And that's, that's his mind, that's his mindset.
You need standards, but you shouldn't have DESE micromanaging your, your schools.
Correct. And so, you know, the hope is that over time, that some of these mandates and some of these accountability measures will, will be eased and we'll be able to return back to really being creative in our classrooms. And so, that was, that was a good news. So, that was what I had for, for new business.
Great. Nice. So, we'll get to our School Committee Officer reorganization. So, we'll welcome Lisa Brown finally as an official School Committee member.
Thank you.
Was sworn in today, was approved by the Board of Selectmen in joint School Committee meeting last night. So, thank you for joining us, Lisa. We appreciate it. I think this is the third time that we've welcomed you, but thank you for hanging in there. So, with finally a, a full Board, we'll get to our reorganizations and assignment to subcommittees. So, with, so reorganization refers to really our, our three officer, officer positions, if that even where, but we have our Chairman, our Chairperson, our, our Vice Chairperson and our Secretary, I believe. So, we had voted myself in as Chairperson and Jillian as Vice Chairperson. Any desire to reopen those from anyone? Okay. So, we have Secretary to settle on. Julie is our outgoing Secretary. Lisa's expressed interest in jumping in there. I'd be looking for a nomination.
I nominate Lisa.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Okay. So, nomination or motion, nomination from, from Julie, second by Jillian. Any questions, comments? You all ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get you up to speed on, mostly for executive sessions that we're going to need that for. And we actually have a nice little template.
I have a form I'll be happy to send to you.
We're sure we're going to try to make it easier for you than it was for Julie, but so. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Welcome on board. So, after that, we have our other committees and subcommittees, which I had sent a list out to you guys via email a while ago, and I brought it with me. So, this is what we've had on board. I'm going to go through that. I've actually added one more to this list around the accounts payables. That's changed in the last year. I'm going to go down the list here. The first one is Strategic Budget Committee. We had myself on there with Sherri Zetlin as the alternate. Strategic Budget Committee has been dormant for over a year now, so I'm going to recommend that we, we don't fill that seat until time calls for it, if it does. Next is our Policy Subcommittee, which Julie Finnegan and Julie Mulder had been sitting on. So, I'll be looking for nominations. Those committees, I would say for this process, I'm not sure how it's run in the past, but if there's one you're interested in, raise your hand, let people know that you're interested in.
Yeah. I don't mind doing that again.
Okay.
We even meet? I feel like there was one meeting.
Well, the part of that would be because we recently had the entire policy manual sort of redone, so I don't think we've met. If, if the question was, have we been meeting? I don't think we have met.
No, but there were, there were a number of things that we, we just didn't get to last year that were policy things that we do need to do.
We need a committee in case things come up throughout the year.
Oh, yeah, there are some things that do need to be addressed.
I like doing that.
Okay. Anyone else particularly interested in this one?
Let's see. Keep going down the list and...
So, you want to go through the whole list and we'll come back? So, go back? Okay. So, Budget Subcommittee, Sherri Zetlin and I were sitting on that. I'd be happy to remain with that one. And I'll just note this one too, at least last year, we were meeting during the day quite a bit to kind of fit with, with Kevin and Courtney's schedules as well, and that wasn't a problem for me and Sherri. I don't know if, if, you know, if Julie or Jillian are interested in that one, how that would work from a scheduling perspective, but just something to keep in, in mind. Facilities Use Subcommittee, again, Julie and Julie were on that one last year. What does that one do?
Yeah, that's another one that we...
So, that was to look at the facility use form, who's using our facilities, who are we charging, who aren't we charging?
Right.
And so forth. So, you know, for example, the elementary school field just was recently refurbished a bit with some servicing for the seating and, and air rating and so forth. Well, that was something that we, we worked out with the people who have been using the field. They made a donation and we, so that would be something that would be, might come under that heading, Facilities Use Subcommittee. But mostly, it's, it's reviewing the facility use applications, the fee structure and so forth.
Okay. Next pullout would be negotiations. And again, last year, it was, it was Sherri and Julie Mulder. Last year involved our DTA contract, obviously. This year, I believe from negotiations perspective, we'll be reviewing the, the step structure? Is that, is that something that's going to happen?
Yeah, there's one thing on the docket that has to be done. So, the, you're going to finally approve the one, one of the pieces of the agreement was Appendix C. The other one was to look at the salary grid that's in the existing contract to make a, sit down and negotiate and make a proposal to modify that.
All right. So, that's something that we've been interested in, and the Teacher Association is also looking forward to, I guess, you know, revisiting it this year, so.
That would be the only thing that we have in negotiations.
Is there anything else that we should know about?
Yeah, but the negotiations would start...
Following year.
The following.
So, we've got this, this year coming up as a bye year, and then the following year we would be involved.
Okay, I'll volunteer to do it then.
But the, but the, but that one issue will, will need to be, will need to be met and negotiated as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Extracurricular Committee, that's what that is. And we had Julie and Jillian on that. Want to tell us all about extracurriculars from last year?
We didn't meet one.
Okay. Is, again, the intention for that particular is...
Well, part of it was that when, when we had the budget cuts, we were in real, we were in real dire straits as to how we were going to keep those programs alive. I think that's really where a lot of that came from.
Is that one that we need to...
I don't think so.
I don't think it's an urgent one. I don't, I don't think at this point, I mean, because we've, we've just redone the entire appendix, which, which is for the most part, almost everything that, actually, it is everything that's an extracurricular, so.
Okay.
I think, I think that you could put, much like the Subcommittee, Budget, Strategic, I think you could hold on that committee.
Yeah, we can bypass that one. Okay. Look to bypass that one then.
And if, if something comes up, we can, we can bring it to your attention.
Yeah, we can revisit later in the, in the school year, so. Next, we have Signing for Payroll. We had Sherri Zetlin and Julie Finnegan in there as a backup. I've been doing that currently, but we didn't vote on a backup for that, which we definitely need, because we know that during that week goes out and you guys all had to go in, so in order to avoid that, we should assign a backup there. The next one on the list is the Old Grammar School Disposition Committee, which we actually had Scott Usino had volunteered to stay on even after he left the committee, which I think we agreed to. But again, it seems like a dormant committee right now. It even came up at the Board of Selectmen meeting last night, and they even kind of said, "Well, we're not really doing anything with that right now." So, it's another one I would say, unless anyone has any objections, that we just kind of leave for now.
Again, I would say with that, Brett, that there's, there is the possibility, as you know, that if, if that program Education Alliance gets off the ground, there is the possibility that that might be something that comes up during the course of this year.
Absolutely.
So, at that point, we would, we might need to put a couple of people on that committee.
Okay. And the last one, actually, not on the list, but, because I think this is a new, but the accounts payable sign off. So, again, I haven't taken that, but I think it would be good to have a backup or if anyone wants to jump in on that one, you know, we can revisit that.
So, with that one, I think that would be a good idea for, not to put you guys on the spot, but you guys are home during the day, so it would probably be a better idea to go with that.
Let's go down with the backup.
Yeah.
You know?
There's two other ones. One was capital improvement, or no?
Oh, did I skip one? Oh, yeah, capital improvement. Yeah. So, capital improvement, I've been a little confused on, because...
Yeah, me too, because it's changed. It's like, it's changed.
I jumped in there. Well, they asked us to provide someone from a School Committee perspective last year, but really, once I got there, they were like, "Well, actually, there isn't a School Committee position. You're, you're here as an at-large position." Which I was fine with, because I had sat down there previously as a Finance Committee member. And again, I even think that was an at-large position. They just wanted someone with Finance Committee experience. So, I think they were just desperate for members. They needed to get a quorum, so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to help out. So, I'm happy to maintain my at-large position there. I don't think that's an officially a, a School Committee position there, so. But I think they're always looking for members, so if you guys are interested in capital improvement, go see Chief.
And the other one that's not listed, but it's something that we do, we should have, and I would, I wouldn't mind volunteering for it, since I've done it before, is Superintendent's Search Committee.
Ah, yes, because that...
I mean, I really hope that we do not have to have that, but we have to be wise.
That's a good one. Thank you. Okay. We will go with that. All right. So, let's just go back to the top of the list and head down. So, Policy Subcommittee, I'm looking for volunteers and nominations. So, it sounded like Julie Mulder was interested in staying with that one.
I'll nominate Julie Mulder for Policy Subcommittee meeting.
Thanks, Jillian.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
I'll do that one as well.
Okay.
I nominate Jillian.
All right. So, Kelly nominates Jillian.
Second.
Second by Lisa. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Jillian and Julie Mulder on our Policy Subcommittee. Expecting lots from you guys there this year. Budget Subcommittee, again, I'm happy to stay on with that one.
I can do that one.
I'll nominate Lisa Brown.
Okay.
Budget Subcommittee, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. For our second, I guess. I'm assuming you have to renominate me?
I'll nominate Brett Argle.
Thank you. Unless you want to throw me off.
Second.
All right. Nomination by Jillian, second by Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right. Okay. Facilities Use Subcommittee. So, we had Julie and Julie there.
I'll nominate Julie Mulder for Facilities Subcommittee.
Okay. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I'll go wherever you guys need me.
I'll nominate Kelly.
Jillian nominates Kelly.
Second.
Second from Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. Negotiations, Julie?
I nominate Brett Argle.
Second.
How I feel about that.
All right. We have a nomination from Jillian, second by Lisa. All those in favor?
Anybody else want to do negotiations? Oh, aye. Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, anyone else? Again, I don't think this is going to be as different as normal.
Can you explain again what it is?
So, on the salary grid, there are steps and then there are lanes. And if you recall, one of the biggest areas of concern for, for us was that between step ten and eleven, there was a big spread in, in dollar amount. And so, the thought was, can we take that and divide that equally throughout the eleven steps?
Well, there's several that have a huge jumps, huge jumps.
Yeah.
And I have that on a grid. I actually have that all calculated. I put all the percentages...
I might be misspeaking here, but wasn't, wasn't there an interest in possibly extending the grid as well?
You could, you could have, you could either increase the, the number of steps if you wanted to, or you, I don't know that you would be able to go beyond where it is, because right now it goes up to doctorate, so.
And just for my clarification, anyone watching at home, steps are, are years of service, correct?
Years of service.
Each year is a step?
Each year is a step, and right now, to get to the top step, it's eleven years. So, you could, you could go twelve, thirteen, fourteen. If, if there's agreement between the, the committee and the DTA, you could extend it over a number of years to get to the top step.
And beyond those steps, there's some longevity, I think?
There's some longevity in there as well, but that's not part of this...
That's not part of the grid.
That's not part of the grid that we would be working on.
And then the lanes are more based on certifications?
Credits. Yeah, so trees and credits. So, for bachelors, masters, bachelors, bachelor's thirty, no, bachelor's fifteen, masters, masters fifteen, masters thirty, something thirty-six, I think it is, and then doctorate.
Okay. Great.
Which is standard by all schools.
So, we're just looking to, I think, smooth that out a little bit, so there aren't these huge spikes that we see potentially. So, I think ultimately, the idea is to, you know, maintain the structure overall and just try to, try to smooth out some of the bumps.
So, that would be the work. The issue would be negotiating with the members of the DTA. So, you need to be able to find some time to do that. We have been meeting, for, for example, with the Appendix C, we were meeting in the afternoons, three o'clock, three-thirty, and doing stuff like that for a little period of time. I, I would think that if that doesn't work, then we would have to do some night meetings, if that's, if that's what we need. But I think it will probably take, it'll probably take a couple of meetings. I don't think it'll go, I don't, I don't think it's going to be as simple as, okay, let's add them up, divide them by twelve and, and be done with it. I don't think that's what, I think it's going to be a little bit of a, an issue. Not an issue, but it's going to require some time and some considerations.
Okay.
So, you should have a second person on there as well.
Looking for a second volunteer or a second nomination.
Brett's already in there. I didn't bring any change, so I can't, can't flip a coin.
I really want to jump on. Come on, Julie.
I mean, we could try, start with one.
Yeah, as you say, we could just leave it open and let's see how schedules go. If my schedule...
Really, when is this going to pick up and start, though?
We really need to start it probably in September or October, late September, early October, at the very latest, because we want to get it done and in the books before we need to build next year's budget.
Okay.
I'll be there.
All right. You're leaving it to us, guys.
I'm sure that Muskegon will be there as well, maybe.
Okay.
Let's come back to that one. Do we come back to it and just see?
I didn't for this.
Yeah, I think we have someone assigned to it for now, so we can start with that. And then if we find that we need to add someone, or we think it's in our interest to add someone, we'll add someone later.
Now, let's play it by year.
Okay.
I can't connect to that right now.
All right. We decided to abandon extracurricular for now. We can always revisit if needed. Signing for payroll. So, again, I'm willing to stay on, but if anyone else wants to take over primary for that?
Anyone? Either one of you guys want to do that, or...
Or we're going to just sign a backup.
I can, or you can be the backup. Up to you.
Okay. All right.
So, I'll nominate Lisa Brown.
Okay.
As our altern, as our alternate.
Yeah.
So, we have a nomination from Jillian.
Second.
Second by Kelly.
I'm going to do...
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Sorry.
Did we, did somebody nominate Brett?
I was already there. I don't know if we have to redo that one.
No, we already voted you. Otherwise, nobody would have been getting, or all three, or three people would have been getting.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to redo that one, but I think...
Yeah, we had to vote him, right?
Yes.
Because we needed someone while we were kind of waiting on this, so.
Yeah.
We'll leave it as, as me and Lisa then. I wonder if everyone's okay with that. And then accounts payable as well. I'm going, I'm willing to stay on as the primary, but...
I can do that.
I nominate Lisa Brown.
Second.
Second by Kelly, nominated by Jillian. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, Lisa and I.
And should we re, Brett, with, with the accounts payable, I don't think we redid it when we did the payroll, did we?
So, I'll nominate Brett. I don't remember if we did or not.
Second.
Second.
Nomination from Jillian and second by Kelly.
Actually, I can nominate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you care if you're primary or secondary?
For which one?
Accounts payable.
Uh, either, whichever.
They don't necessarily come at the same time all the time, so, actually, it probably would be good to kind of split it up, and you take one of them, so...
I'll take that. Yeah, I'll take the accounts payable.
Take accounts payable?
Yeah.
Accounts payable versus what?
Versus payroll.
Payroll. Oh, okay. Accounts payable is the one where there's like a lot of...
Far as primary, though.
It's primary, yeah.
She's doing both, but one's primary, one's all.
Yeah, so, yeah, so she, this is going to be primary for accounts payable, and I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
And we actually have accounts payables tomorrow, so actually, and I'll be there for payroll as well, so. If you can be there, if not, I'll take care of it, but it'd be good, I can be there to go through it with you.
Well, it depends on what time.
Nine-ish? Nine-thirty-ish?
Maybe.
Okay. We'll talk later. But we'll list you as, as primary and myself as alternate, and on payroll, I'll be the primary with you as alternate.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. So, then the last one, and I do think it's worthy of us assigning some folks now, with the Superintendent's Search Committee. Because, you know, just to recap, it's November first, right? I think we've agreed to come together and to have us express our interest in keeping you on at that time, if, if that's our desire, and have you express whether you're interested in, in staying onboard. But I, I think it'd be worth us doing some work even before then, so we're ready in case, you know, we decide that, that's not going to happen, either one of us, so. Because I think once that happens, we don't want to be kind of left scrambled.
The, the goal would be to, to get it posted in December and probably begin the process in January and try to get somebody onboard by February.
But even have whoever it's going to be do some, you know, some search on, you know, what, what is it?
That's a very ambitious timeline. I don't think that's going to happen, but you never know.
Oh, I think it will.
You think that's bad?
I'll nominate Kelly Greedy.
There were forty-four new superintendents in the state of Massachusetts this year.
Last year?
Forty-four new ones this year.
I have three hundred and eighty-one. Um, so we have a nomination for.
Species. Superintendent of schools is an endangered species.
Gillian has nominated Kelly, and Lisa has seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Well, I missed that one, who, who?
Uh, Kelly.
Kelly is, and who nominated her?
Who do you think?
Gillian.
The nominator.
And who seconded?
Me.
Uh, Lisa.
Very good, and it was unanimous?
You have a title now, Gillian.
I'm the nominator.
Yeah.
Is there a second person?
I'll nominate Julie. Kelly's stealing your title.
Yeah. So we have a nomination for Julie Mulder, as our second person. We have a second from Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Wait, do we have three people on it?
So superintendent search committee.
Now, the one caveat to that is if, if there's a lot of traveling, I probably can't do it, but we'll have to get to there. Because before, like, we had to travel to, like, Pittsfield, stuff like that, so.
All this.
Well, I have, I have daytime availability, once after school hits, it gets tight, but daytime, I have availability.
Because you travel to the different schools, but we can figure that out, we don't necessarily both have to go, other people can go to.
Might work out where there's a night event, one can cover, and there's a day event, another can cover. Um, but yeah, I would say this is something, again, I'm, I'm hoping we can come to some kind of agreement to extend Mr. Means, but I want us to be prepared for not happening. So even to start doing some research now about the process that you're familiar with, it, once it comes up, is, um, something I, I would recommend, so. All right, I think that's everything there. Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, superintendent's report, you're welcome.
So the, on the superintendent's report, you have there the continued work with Education Alliance, um, so, um, Brett and Josh Romano met, uh, probably about three weeks ago.
Yeah.
And, um, had an opportunity to go and discuss the, um, the planning stage, the work and so forth, and I believe that Josh Romano went back, um, about ten days ago for a, a follow-up meeting. So where we're at right now is, uh, we're on the same page, we, we know what the expectations are. One of the things is that we're, they're doing some prep work for us now, and, uh, email came in this afternoon right before I left, I did not get a chance to open it, but I think it, it was, it was an outlay of some of the things that we would need to provide to them, so they can do some of their analysis work.
Correct.
So some of that stuff we can do in the summertime, they did agree, um, to move some of the work involving, um, surveys with, with faculty and staff and students into, um, September, October, because, um, we, there's just no way we were going to, we were going to get people here in the summertime.
Remember that, that, the, the contract they had was, was a forty-five day contract, they, they basically agreed to kind of not necessarily be forty-five contiguous days.
Right.
contiguous days, you know, so they're going to do some whatever work they can now, um, which is more, it's, it's mostly around, um, looking at where our students, um, have been going.
Correct.
Where they would like to go.
Right.
Fields they're interested in, fields they've actually entered, that kind of stuff, so.
They'll want to, they'll, in, in September, they'll want to do a survey of students, uh, to get some survey data, um, they also, as you know, um, as we talked about, they're looking to, um, generate some interest in students who will go up to the University of Madison Amherst. Uh, opportunity to see some of their program work, but also the other part of it is to get younger kids on a college campus, excuse me, to see what college life is all about, and generate some interest in that. They will also be looking to provide us some, some direction on, um, uh, college planning as well.
Yeah.
And, and that will probably, I would imagine, would come in September as well, once we give them the data, the follow-up data would come to it. So, um, I, I did have opportunity to speak with, uh, the town administrator relative to the building, and they do still have an interest in the building. That's something that, um, we'll try to set a meeting up with between Education Alliance and the town administrator and other town officials to talk a little bit about the vision, he sees that as an innovation lab, a, you know, an extension of the, um, of the classroom. Hopefully to turn it into a college satellite, uh, if, if you will, UMass and, um, Wachusett. He has some great visions, um, the, the, the real issue is, and, and Brett and I were talking about this earlier today, is, um, I, I see this as being something that's going to take place over a period of years, that if Oxbridge, Northbridge, and Douglas get on board and develop interest in the programs, that it's, it's the field of dreams. If we build it, others will come.
Yeah.
So the hope is that we would then eventually try to generate some interest, uh, from, say, a, um, Webster and Sutton and Blackstone Millville and Grafton and Hope Dale, and, and, and trying to generate so that, then, then it truly could become a collaborative school. So I think it, I, I think that the process is, is down the road, um, it'll take a few, it'll take a few years to get it going. The conversations that I've had with, uh, with Josh and with the administrative team is really around the area of exploring, how do we begin the process of, of looking at becoming an, a, uh, animal and plant science-recognized, a chapter seventy-four school? I did find out while I was down the Cape that, um, I believe it's Maynard is, is a school that just recently received that, 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 uh, denotion, so now that other schools can, students can come there and, and not have to go to Norfolk Gaggy. So my thought is that it's a very strong possibility that if we can get in and, and begin this process and meet the, the requirements for seven, chapter seventy-four, that instead of the twenty-two or twenty-three students from Oxbridge who are going to Norfolk, they'll come to us. And the same with Blackstone Millville, and the same with Sutton, that, that might be a niche for us to continue to generate some school choice into our district. As, as we mentioned, there will be some outlay of, of, you'll need some staffing, you'll need some materials, so there will be some of that. Part of that is we hope that, uh, the, that the work that the, at Alliance is going to do will help us to, to qualify for some grant funding, to help us get, get some of those programs in place. So we're, we're still at that point, it's still exploratory, but, uh, we've, we've, we've entered into the agreement, they've given us some details as to what they're going to do, they've given us some specifics as to what they want from us, we've given them specifics of what we're looking for from them. It, one of the areas that was of great concern was for them to provide us with some guidance relative to curriculum for animal and plant science, so that we would be in compliance with chapter seventy-four. So that's kind of where we're at as of right now.
Uh, I would just add two, two things to that, um, during my conversation when I was there with Josh, um, about the building came up, I, I think the price tag for them to do an assessment of the building and, and I think that design as well was eight thousand dollars.
Right.
Just so you guys know roughly, again, we haven't committed to that, but, um, he did let us know that that's, that's what they'd be looking for to kind of move forward on the building.
And I did talk with the town administrator, my, my assumption would be that that wouldn't be ours, that would be something that would be under their.
Home town, yeah.
Their, their, their control, because it's not our building, so I think that that would come out of there, and I, and I, and I believe that they think the same. The, the initial expenditures are worth the dollar amounts to at least see what the potential is that's there. So.
And I, I would just add, I think, again, folks at the Education Alliance have, have some very interesting ideas and visions, um, that, um, I think would be great for us, I think where, where we're going to differ is, I think, probably in the timeframe, they're very aggressive in kind of how fast they want to pursue this, and again, just based on when, when we got involved with them, with the summer, not going to allow that, and I think some of the other, other issues, we just got to, you know, I think that, that's, that's where we're going to, we're going to find that, we still need to do some aligning, is on, is on the timeframes and how fast we're moving.
Part of that, I, I believe Brett, is also because, as, as you know, we kept them at, at, at bay for a little while, because we were, we were waiting to get the, see what happened with the, with the override. I mean, if the override didn't go through, then it really didn't seem like it was a very pragmatic thing for us to get involved in, because we wouldn't be adding programs, if anything, we'd be cutting programs. So, um, he'd, you know, they, they were pushing, because the other schools were ahead of us, and, and, and they were, they were on board, and we were lagging behind, and they really want to get a third school involved in it. But the, the real, the, the realization was that we really couldn't go forward until we had the town vote on the override to see if in fact the addition of some programs was going to be a possibility, which we're really.
And I, I just think with the idea of, of the collaborative, and I, and I don't necessarily disagree with you that it might take time to get to the collaborative, I, I think they're back, back in the mindset that why can't we do the collaborative right now?
Right.
We've got three schools, let's, let's push forward with that, so I think that's just something we, we've got to kind of, you know, come to agreement on at some point, where I think we're probably in different places on that right now, so.
And I, and I, and I think that the animal and plant science, the more I, the more I keep thinking about it, the more I think that it's going to be a nice niche for us, that we might get some, some school choice students in, as well as have the, the opportunity to add that to who we are as a school district. And I, I got to think that driving from Oxbridge to Douglas makes a lot more sense than driving from Oxbridge to Walpole.
Yeah.
So.
And just that the more I see other folks at, at the Douglas Orchard and Farm, the more.
Right.
Sounds like, that's a good group to get involved with, they're doing some really interesting stuff up there, and they're, they're doers, let's, you know, let's put that way there.
Yes.
So, it's good.
Okay, then I had, I had some information to provide you, uh, we've been busy this summer, um, trying to, um, hire some staff, that we have, have hired some people, I provided you with their resumes, just so you could have that as a reference, so I'll just kind of quickly go through them. At the elementary school, uh, we added, um, a young lady named Sadie Haddad from North Oxford, she's a UMass grad in two thousand fourteen in communications disorder and education, she did her master's through AIC, American International College out of Springfield. She has her certification in moderate disabilities pre-K to eight, um, she graduated in that program in May of two thousand and eighteen, uh, she's done her student teaching at a, uh, elementary school in Westboro. She does have some para experience within special education, she has some speech and language experience within special education, this will be her first teaching assignment, uh, outside of her student teaching experience, so, uh, we're happy to have Sadie on.
So she'll be a special education teacher, I'm assuming?
Say that again.
Special education teacher.
Special education teacher, yes, we're, we're looking for two in that, in that building, so, uh, the second addition in the elementary school, uh, is also a special education teacher, Sarah Kennedy, she's from Franklin, Mass, uh, graduated in May of two thousand and eighteen. From Westfield State University.
That makes her a little bit cheaper, which is kind of good.
We've been, uh.
Hate to say that.
I would say, I, and I, I agree with you, but I would tell you that we, there, these are some really strong young people coming out of school, and somebody has to give them an opportunity, and, 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 uh, we've, we've done a lot of interviewing, and, and they, they rose to the occasion, they were, they were the stronger of the candidates, so.
Now, it says that she's a PE teacher, though?
No, there's, there's another teacher that's a PE teacher, so this, this little lady, Sarah Kennedy, is, is a special education teacher, she has her bachelor's degree in moderate disabilities and special education, she also did a, a minor in reading concentration, uh, with three guys especially, she did her student teaching in Chicopee, at an elem-, um, elementary school in Chicopee. Uh, she also did some work at a elementary school in Medfield, um, she has done one-to-one tutoring for students with ADHD as well as ELL, and this also will be her first, um, experience in the, in the classroom of her own, um, she, besides her student teaching.
This is also elementary school for us?
Those two, those two are both going to the elementary school, right.
Okay.
I found it interesting, sitting across the table and, and asking the questions that I wanted to ask before I committed to them, um, I realized that I'm a long ways away from twenty-two. And twenty-two looks like sixteen, it really does. I mean, I, I, at the middle school. We have hired, uh, as of today, a PE health teacher, uh, her name is Emily Shank, she is from Oxbridge, she's a graduate of Salem State University, she has a master's degree in educational leadership. She has two years of experience, the past two years she has served as a PE health teacher at Braintree High School. Obviously, driving from Oxbridge to Braintree was challenging, driving from Oxbridge to Douglas would be certainly a savings for her. She also has experience as a soccer coach, um, she also has experience as a cheerleading coach, she also has experience as a CrossFit instructor, she will be, happen to be looking to offer CrossFit. And she has done a number of long-term substitute activity, uh, positions in Needham and in Hopkinton, uh, so she'll be joining us at the middle school.
We don't have the same, uh, PE teacher anymore?
No.
That person's gone?
So this is, this, this person is certified in both of those positions, the other person was not certified in, in health.
So we, we added a point five health.
Health, but in essence, it became a one-point-oh position.
Because it's repeating, replacing another point-five PE.
Point-five PE teacher, so.
Okay, so it ends up being a full.
So one person can, uh, taking.
All right, so she's the main, uh, PE teacher now?
She is the only PE and health teacher in the middle school.
Okay.
Great.
Um, guidance and adjustment counselor at the middle school, um, this is tentative, uh, she's coming in tomorrow to sign her, her paperwork, uh, her name is Caitlin McCarroll, uh, she lives in Easton, she's a graduate of URI. She has a bachelor's degree in, in psychology and a minor in fanatology, which I'm not really sure what that is, I'll figure it out at some point, she does have a master's degree in school counseling from assumption in May of two thousand and eighteen. An interesting little discussion was when we were talking, is that, that I told her that I had been teaching in, in Milford, when I was, when I first started in Milford, it turns out that her master's advisor was my mentor in my first teaching experience. So, small world. Said, do you know Mr. Dufour, and I said, yes, he's my, he was my mentor.
You got a good recommendation for Mr. Dufour?
Yep, yep. So she has done, um, she has done guidance, she has, I'm sorry, she has the guidance and adjustment counseling certification, so as, as you know, Kristen O'Brien's job was part guidance, part, part adjustment, and so she has both the certifications like Kristen. Uh, she has done a lot of work at North Quincy Long Term Substitute, they gave her very favorable recommendations, uh, when we called them, um, and, uh, this will be her first experience, but she has, um, she has done two internships, full-year internships, so she's done two years of practical experience in the form of internships, but it'll be her first real, uh, experience. And then the last position that we have completed is that we have agreed to a, um, Douglas Elementary School principal's position.
Oh, wow, really?
Yes, the gentleman's name is Jonathan Bell.
Oh, wow.
And he comes to us by way of Oliath, Kansas.
Wow.
He's originally, he, he grew up in Medfield, Mass.
Oh, okay, okay.
Left his junior year and they moved to Kansas, now, that being said, his wife has only lived in Kansas, but she, um, she is also coming, obviously, with the family, um, but anyway, let me tell you a little bit about him. So he, um, he has a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Mid-American Nazarene University, which is in Oliath, Kansas, uh, so he went to school, he lived in Missouri, went to school in Oliath, Kansas, he has his master's degree from Emporia State University in Emporia, Kansas, that's in educational administration. He received that in two thousand and nine, he has eight years of classroom experience, he was a grade four teacher, he has, at Ravenwood Elementary School in Oliath, he has, um, uh, he, while he was a teacher, in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, he was a nominee for the, uh, of, the, Oliath, Kansas's nominee for teacher of the year for the state of Kansas. Um, so he obviously had strong pedigree there, he has five years of experience as an elementary school principal, so this is not his first principalship, he's done, he's been a principal for five years at Westview Elementary in Oliath, Kansas. Uh, his school was selected as a Kansas CAN school redesign project in two thousand and seventeen, he was the two thousand and sixteen recipient of the Kansas Challenge Award for making notable differences in student achievement, he worked in a, in a, what would be described as a, um, um, low-income, low, um, achievement school, and made major strides in, in, in changing their achievement status. Uh, as I mentioned, he's, his wife, Ashley, um, is, is joining him, uh, she has secured a position at Bellingham High School as a Spanish teacher.
Oh, wow, nice.
Which is good, um, so they both have a job. Interesting little bit of information is, we originally agreed to have, uh, John do his interview by way of Skype, uh, he said, well, um, we're going to be on vacation, I'm not sure where I'm going to be, so they had driven from Kansas, they went across part of the Midwest, they were up at Niagara Falls. So I told them, I said, don't worry about it, we'll do a Skype from Niagara, we'll make it all work, he and his wife and four children drove from Niagara Falls to Douglas to do a face-to-face interview.
Wow.
Um, and I was thinking about my father and the, with five children in the car and how.
He's a Virginia accent.
He's got, he's got four, they have four children, four boys, uh, they've all been to the, to the building and so forth, um, interestingly, they are two, four, six, eight.
Nice.
All four boys, and so.
Really pretty.
I talked with him just the other day, they are looking for houses in the, in the area, they've looked at, they were out last weekend, he and his wife, and they looked at, um, eight houses when they were here, originally, they looked at eight houses, um, so they're trying to find a house in the immediate area, they're looking in Mendon, Hope Dale, Upton, um, Douglas, Sutton, they're kind of looking in the area, trying to find something. But now that she's got a job in Bellingham, I think they're going to refine their search more towards the Mendon, Upton, Hope Dale area, because there's a little, it'll be right in between. Uh, he anticipates starting on August first, which I think is great, I don't know how he's going to sell a house, pack up a house, move a house, put it in storage, buy a house, and move into a house, but that's up to him.
Having done that, Godspeed.
Yeah, he's, I mean, he's, they made, he's.
I think that's really cool that we have somebody coming from, like, another place in the country, that is so cool.
Uh, he did interview with the committee, there was a committee before he interviewed with, with me, um, and they really liked him originally, um, because he was from Kansas, they, they were looking for people who were local, and, and I, and I said to Neely, I said, I said, you got to, you got to give him a call, you've got to see if he'll do a Skype interview, because his res, his resume was five years of experience, all the stuff about the, the, uh, the, uh, achievement in, in turning the school around, I said, you know, who knows, maybe, maybe he will come back to, to, to Medfield. And so I had called him originally, I said, I got to ask the question, John, before we even offer you an opportunity to interview, I, why did you put in for this? He says, I, I grew up in Medfield, my, I have, my brother lives in Boston, my sister lives in Nashua, and I would like to try to have my children know their, their relatives, which, and then I thought, your wife has never been out of Kansas.
Yeah, it'll be cultural.
Good luck with that, sir. Good luck. But, um, really, really impressed by him, actually with all the people that we've, that we've brought in so far, I've been very pleased with the, the people that we've brought forward, um, and we've got a few more positions to fill, and we, we are interviewing, and we are trying to fill them. I should tell you that we originally had a business teacher for the high school, um, that business teacher has decided not to take the position now, um, so we have reposted that position, uh, we are in finals interviews for the adjustment counselor here, and we will begin the, uh, interviews for the adjustment counselor at the elementary school next week. Hope to have those, and those taken care of as well.
So, a, a question for you, um, I, I meant to revisit the article before I came tonight, but I didn't, um, I saw something last week where Governor Baker has approved, I think, eighty-five million in grants around school security.
Security, right.
Including mental health and adjustment counselors and whatnot, do, do you have any more details on that?
That's all, that's all I've heard.
I saw the same thing as me.
But I, but I believe, you know, um, and everybody, and that, which is, which is kind of tragic in the, in the, in the fact that five years ago, they started talking about the social emotional piece, and it took five years to finally get to the point where they're going to maybe throw some money at it, but, um, whatever we can get.
Yeah.
We need.
Yep. And even, I'm, I'm assuming that the part I zeroed in was the adjustment council, because I knew we were hiring there, but I'm assuming there's, there's physical security pieces in there as well, around securing classrooms and some of the stuff that, you know.
We've been talking about, and, and, and I should mention, they are continuing their work, um, you met, what, the safety committee met last week, or this week, last week, you met the safety committee.
Uh, it was last week, I believe, yeah.
So they're continuing their, excuse me, their work as well.
Great.
So.
Thank you.
Yep, that's all the new hires as of right now, and fingers crossed that, and it, it happens from year to time, you know, somebody else calls and said, we want to offer you the job, and we're going to pay you, you know, let's hope that nobody leaves, we've had that happen, so.
Yeah, we had it happen not too long ago.
Number of times.
Yep.
Okay. So, um, school committee and subcommittee reports, um, accounts payable report, um, we've actually had two, um, batches, or two sets of, um, warrants that signed since our last meeting, um, so we had some warrants dated six-twenty-one, a total of fifteen batches, um, in the amount of two-hundred-sixty-nine thousand dollars, two-hundred-sixty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents, um, all the gory details here, if you'd like. Um, we also had warrants dated, uh, six-twenty-eight, again, sixteen batches this time, for a hundred-twenty thousand, four-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and three cents, and then all your gory details there. So you'll get to know those from, uh, later, I'll leave so. And I, I just wanted to bring up some, um, discussion on upcoming MSC, MASC conferences, um, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So we do have the Summer Institute, which is this weekend, um, Sherri and I attended last year, I'm saying, I, I think just the Friday evening portion of it, or the Saturday morning portion, I forget, it runs like Friday evening, four o'clock, I think there's a couple sessions Friday night, and then some sessions Saturday morning, um, I think there's still time to sign up for it, I can't make it this year, my wife will be out of town, so it'll be difficult for me to get there, it was pretty interesting last year, um, it's some more targeted, um, topics than what you'll get at the chart and the course, um, stuff. So if you get a chance, I think it's, it's always at the Hotel of the Marlboro there, it's pretty easy to get to, um, and the other thing is the conference, the, the joint conference in November, um, there, you know, signups are open for that as well, that, that's its joint superintendent and, and school committee conference in November? I know they call it a joint conference, but that's, that's not what superintendents, who's it a joint conference with?
What was that?
The November conference for school committees, they call it a joint conference, trying to think who it's in joint with. Okay. Anyways, that's runs, kind of, again, like, four days, early November, um, I'm, I'm going to look to go to it this year, um, I think the cost is somewhere on a thousand dollars, is that?
I don't remember.
Have to look that up, but I think we've, we've paid for Sherri to go to that in the past, um, and I, I'm assuming we've paid for hotels in the past for that as well, so just to give everybody a heads up that it's an expense that might be current for me, but I think, you know, for other, you know, especially new members. It's out in the Cape.
Yeah, it's out in the Cape, yeah.
The Hans Conference Center, I think it is, so, um, if you're interested, I think we can save a hundred dollars if we sign up by, like, August tenth, so, which I'm going to be looking to do, um.
Oh, for the November one?
For the November one, yeah, so.
I'll take, I'll take a look.
And because we have got a couple of new members too, so if you want to go to the one coming up, and you said, did I hear you correctly, this weekend?
I think it's this weekend, yeah, so.
So if you want to do that, um, sign up, just make sure we get a copy of it, so we'll encumber the funds and, and all that, and, um, and so if you end up having to pay online, we just need proof of, of your credit card payment or whatever it is, and then you will get, you'll get reimbursed.
Any other questions, comments? And there's the, the chart and the course one is out there, again, I think, um, Kelly and Lisa, um, you need to take that sometime in your first, within your first year, um, I believe is what it is, um, again, there's one in August, it's out in Huzek, there'll be one soon after that, that isn't published yet, that'll hopefully be closer than, than Huzek, so, um, I'll keep an eye out for that and, you know, let you guys know. All right. Our consent agenda, we have our June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen meeting minutes, we do have a couple updates, um, that Courtney and I have noted, um, so, just going through. On the third printed page, under the FY two thousand and nineteen general fund budget, um, there's a couple corrections that, that Courtney has noted, about halfway down the first paragraph, um, it says, add a point-five custod- has noted, about halfway down the first paragraph, it says, "Add a .5 custodian, that's fine, the next position after that, add a special ed position, it's, should say, say special education teacher position there, and then add a .38 DES clerk is fine, but it should also say plus a .38 DMS clerk, so it's, it's combined, .75 clerk being split between DES and DMS, so it's, it's 2.38 there, and then further down that paragraph, add a .5 digital technology teaching position, correct?
Yeah, just word teacher, yeah.
Okay, digital technology teacher, and the other cha, change I had noted was, there, go by it, oh, just, no, just above that, under the vote to appropriate funding for Education Alliance work, the very last sentence, where it says, "Would like to contact, contract to include information on the architecture", I think it should say the architecture program, Mr. Means?
Say that again.
Um, the, the last sentence around, "We wanted the contract with Education Alliance to include information", right now it says, "On the architecture", I believe that's the architecture program.
Program, right, it wasn't on the...
Yeah, we're not looking back at the actual architecture of any buildings, just an architecture program, so...
Yes, because they offer, as, as you know, they offer, there's, there's a relationship with the Boston School of Architecture, we want to try to get involved in.
I have, I have some more, too, he, he actually had my copy, remember, I said I couldn't find it? Yes, he had it, so, I was just trying to find out, yeah. Okay, there was a couple, all right, they're, they're, so, and then after, back to that general fund budget.
Yep.
Just say in pay two, it should say network technician positions, because there always says correctly designate in pay two, it should say network technician positions.
First paragraph, second paragraph?
Yeah, along with all those other corrections.
Pay two.
Okay, I got you, yes, pay two, network technician, yeah.
Yep, pay two, yep, yeah, positions, and then also I had a computer t, um, teacher as well.
Which is not included in the list at all?
Change to .61.0, librarian and computer teacher, because librarian's going to be a combined...
It's a combined position, right.
Yeah, yeah, so there was that correction as well, and then I wrote down, oh, yes, and then the verbiage down here on paragraph three, says Ms. Keegan stated that the administrative team recommends an FY 19 budget of, which includes the above additions and other additions, because this didn't really make any sense, so I just put, we should put in the amount fifty-six thousand, zero, fifty-six thousand, thirty-four dollars, because that was a listing that we added back to the budget.
That's what we're adding, of, of the hundred and thirty-three, three fifty...
Yeah, because it just, it didn't make any sense, yeah, it went, yeah, so we need to add that, too, so I shall, I'll take this and, I'll give it to, um, Warren to make the corrections, and then we'll have it approved, and what was yours again, Brett, please? I'll put it on here.
Mine was just on the paragraph above the general fund budget, the very last sentence, information on the architecture program.
Okay, all right, okay, we'll make those corrections.
Any other?
Yes, well, you left in my room.
Comments, corrections, okay, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes for June 20th, 2018, as amended.
We have a motion from Jillian, look for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Julie, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good, thank you.
Obstain.
One abstain from this, she's not officially in there yet, okay, DTA Appendix C proposal.
I know you're saying to yourself, "Why is this back here again?", so, Courtney was, was, in her thorough investigation, realized that there were three or four of the positions that were denoted on the wrong Appendix C that we were using, so, they were, they were listed at $639, and they really should have been $677, what ended up happening was, they were, they, if, if you, if you recall, there were two versions of Appendix C, we started on one, and the DTA asked us to use this other one, which was the one that was attached to the contract, which was the wrong one, so we were using the right one, we went and started using the wrong one, so we needed to correct four or five of the positions that were denoted, so, the members of the DTA were in this morning, they've signed off on it, it, it now is, is completely accurate, apologize for being brought back, thank you, Ms. Keegan, for catching the, the mistakes that were in there, and I don't know if you have anything else.
With one more, with one more addition, the, the one that was sent to you in the packet, there is one change that is being made, so if you could make a notation of that in your motion and vote, on your first page there, color guard down towards the bottom, the word director was added, just to be consistent with the other few...
You should say color guard director, right.
Okay, so if you want to make that notation, just because I want to be very, very, very concise with this, I had the vote just all set, so if you could just say, you know, move, Appendix C included in the packet for the July 18th meeting, with the, with the addition of the word director to color guard, something like that, and then, um...
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Jillian to approve Appendix C from our packet, as amended tonight, to add the word director to the color guard position.
Second.
A second from Julie, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
I have copies for us to sign it, it's over, so that I can then give one back to the DTA, we'll take care of one with the town, and we will have one for our records. They signed this morning, as I mentioned, the two DTA presidents came in and signed, so we have their signatures, I, I will need your signatures on it, I've signed them as well, so that they can then become official, and I hope at that point it won't be bringing it back. Now, the next question is, the next issue there is some obsolete and non-functioning technology, I don't know if you would like me to go one by one?
Oh, no.
No, please.
Because it's three pages in, in length, but I will tell you that they are phones, they are routers, they are servers, they are switches, they are laptops, they are printers, they are PCs, they are monitors, they are notebooks, they are UPS backup cables, they are overhead projectors, there are some TVs, there are some VCRs, there are monitors, there are Chromebooks, there are some old projectors, there is a VCR DVD player, two of them, there is a VCR player, there is a DVD player, there, there is a slide projector, there is a cassette player, and there is also a portable stereo that have been declared as surplus, non-functioning, no surplus value.
So we haven't tried eBay for these, no?
Um, we have not.
What do we just, you just throw them, dispose them in an electronics recycling place?
We would have to obviously find a way to get them, the things, because there are some things that have to be taken care of, for, for, for safety sake.
Yeah, so it sounds like, we're, we're not going to get anything for these, but there'll be disposal fees, is that what you said?
So, my, my sense would be that, what we have done is, is, Donna could...
Let me enter it.
Go ahead, sir.
We use a company, it's called CTR, from Brockton, they come in, and they pick up all our equipment, and they do what they have to, get all the hard drives that are in the laptops, they crush them, and we get a certificate that said they didn't crush them, no charge.
Okay.
Even better.
So, but one of those TVs, I just got to mention, the date on it was 1979, so, sorry, it's end of life.
I don't want to say that that was the year I graduated from college, but it wasn't.
I'm sure you probably had a TV just like this one in college.
Oh, I had a black and white one in college.
Oh, Mr. Means.
A lot easier being that guy, I never thought I'd be that guy, so anyways, you need to take a...
I'm looking for a motion to approve the disposal of obsolete and non-functioning technology.
So moved.
Motion by Jillian, second?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Okay.
And that brings us to school business and operation managers' report.
I just have one, our first year-end reclassification for you this evening, I have two reclasses, you know, we're just, just getting into the beginning of closing out the books, so we are moving partial of the high school athletic director's salary from the revolving fund to the general fund, because we just brought that down, and we are reclassing one of the Telstone transportation from the general fund to the regular 136 account, and that's it.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY 2018 year-end reclass number one, school committee meeting July 18th, 2018.
Is this reclass number one?
Yeah. Well, yeah, year-end reclass.
Oh, year-end reclass, I got you, specific, okay, thank you.
Second.
Any motion by Jillian, seconded by Julie, any other discussion, all those in favor, aye, any opposed? Unanimous, thank you, so how's, how's close going, how's year-end close going?
Oh, we barely, we barely have done anything, yeah, we're just, just, just starting, we're doing the purchase orders now, and, and warrants and all that, but...
Give those other things a minute.
So...
Yeah, that's right.
Courtney has a blue pen.
Oh, yes, I have a blue pen.
The originals we like, it can be blue.
Any other topics not anticipated that we'd like to discuss? The only thing I, I want to bring up potentially is what our schedules look like in August, because I know, our next meeting is August 15th, is that what it says here?
Yes.
August 15th, but we did talk about, we might need a second meeting during August.
You know, for closing the books, we, you know, depending on how, you know...
Yeah, so I just want to know what everyone's schedule looks like on August 22nd, as...
Or would you need us potentially August 7th, I, or August 8th, the Wednesday before?
Do you need it before, or after the next?
Oh, no.
So it's definitely going to be, the second meeting in August will be after the 15th, then?
I can't imagine that, because I'm actually taking a week vacation, I'm actually going away, going somewhere.
Self-care.
So, I'll come back on the 6th.
Okay, so, yeah, so...
It takes me days just to do the transfers.
So the 15th is the first time we'll have any kind of year-end view, and we might need potentially a meeting on the 22nd before the school year starts to wrap up stuff around school choice numbers and...
27th is Monday.
Positions and stuff like that.
Right, I, I think the school choice numbers will have a pretty good idea on by the 15th of August, so for that meeting, we should have...
I was thinking the following Wednesday, 22nd, so...
I'm, I'm around for the 27th.
Or at least just have it tentatively, if we don't need it, but he's correct, if we, you know, if we can do it on the 15th, and we have everything, because, you know, I always give you the balances and all that, and it, and, because...
We can be tentative.
Meeting with the administrative team, discussing this as you go along.
If everyone could just tentatively put it on your schedules that we might need a meeting on the 22nd, please, thank you, can you submit back to Courtney for me, please? Thank you, all right, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion from Julia, second?
Second.
From Jillian, and any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.